This meeting is called to order. Good evening and welcome to the August 6th, 2020 special meeting of the Southeast Delco Board of School Directors. Would you please stand for a moment of silence and salute the flag? Mr. Butler, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, your name, Madam President? Mrs. Abney.
Present.
Mr. McBride.
Present.
Mrs. Monroe.
Present.
Mrs. Peter Kelly.
Present.
Ms. Woodfolk.
Present.
Ms. Crawley.
Present.
Mr. Fowler.
Present.
Mrs. Irons.
Present.
Ms. Harris Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Winder.
Present.
Mr. Diorio.
Present.
Mr. Butler, present.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. I don't have any comments at this time. These are the approvals. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted? So moved. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Questions or new business? Are there any questions on new business item one? Okay, now we're Dr. Winder at the presentation.
Good evening and thank you to our board members for making a time in their schedule tonight to come and to vote on our health and safety reopening plan. For those of you that are not aware, I am Dr. Winder, the new superintendent. So tonight, we will discuss the following bullets. Present charge from the state of Pennsylvania. We will share educational options presented by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. We will provide an overview of decision-making guidance. We will share survey highlights from our stakeholders. We will provide representation of the various options, as well as have my recommendation. So when we look at the charge from the state, on June 3rd, the Pennsylvania Department of Education requested that all school districts create a health and safety plan. Our team has worked on our plan and it is posted on our website, as well as has been submitted to the Chester County Health Department. Then each district in the state of Pennsylvania, including Southeast Delco, is expected to develop this plan in collaboration with stakeholders to reopen schools in the fall. Later on in our presentation, you will see the amount of meetings that we have held and are continuing to hold. Also, on July 31st, the Chester County Health Department once again updated what they had already given us. And so we are continuing getting updates. And as a result of the updates, we are changing our plan. This week, on Tuesday, August the 4th, I had the opportunity to be a part of a meeting with the Health Department, where they provided scenarios and we talked about how they would affect school and how they would affect the students and the staff. One of the scenarios ended up that a student or staff member could actually be in quarantine for a minimum of 24 days. So the educational options that we were presented with were, number one, you could have a total reopening of school for everyone. Two, you could have scaffolded reopening, which would be some students engaged in in-person learning while others would be remote. The third option was blended reopening, which gave a balance of in-school and remote learning or total remote, which is also called virtual learning. And so in order to make the decision in the recommendation, the following things were considered. Number one, our commitment to the well-being of our students and staff. Also, I attended and received weekly updates from the CDC World Health Organization, weekly updates from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and the Chester County Health Department, Pennsylvania Department of Education Superintendents and the Pandemic School Reopening Task Force met weeklies and sometimes twice within a week. Continuing, on July 13th, we had a district-wide planning, development and response team meeting, where we had employees from each work group were a part of that, as well as our teacher and federation unions. The cabinet for the Southeast Delco School District, which consists of our chief operation officer, our chief human resource officers, both of our assistant superintendents and the superintendent. We meet weekly, every week, if not twice a week, since July 1. Our administrators for the entire district came together July 27th to the 30th. And each day, we did some work on our plan. We had surveys from our families and staff members. And Mr. Butler and I met with the Southeast Delco Education Association on August the 3rd. So we took all of that information to try to determine what was best for our students. Just a snapshot of the survey highlights from the families. We had 470 responses and 83 of them were pleased with the virtual learning, 83% of them. But they had extremely mixed emotions concerning reopening preferences. It was across the board. Some prefer one over the other. But 51% were in the category of blended learn. Also, I have received emails this week, as well as the board has received emails this week, with concerns that cases are increasing in the Southeast Delco community. For our staff, Mr. Butler and I met with the union, as well as a district. We gave our own survey. We found that about 26.1% of our staff have high-risk illnesses. And these illnesses were determined high-risk by the CDC. They are serious heart conditions, cancers, chronic kidney disease, COPD, BMI greater than 30 and sickle cell anemia were on that list. And then the moderate list were organ transplants, asthma, pregnancy, immunization supplemental meds, HIV, neuro conditions, pediatrics, high blood pressure were a group of the other illnesses that were considered high or moderate risk. Also, 65% of our staff preferred the virtual model. And there was a high concern about teaching in the high heat humidity with masks in buildings without air conditioning. We know we have three buildings without air conditioning. I also was privy to learn that we also have a building that has a group of classrooms with no windows. And so the other concern was that, once again, our district is now a hotspot. So I recommend that the district initiates a robust remote learning slash virtual learning program through the first marking period, which the first marking period ends November the 13th, 2020. The remote learning virtual program will contain both synchronous, which is means live, and asynchronous, which is recorded, can get later learning at all levels in the district. Interactive instruction and regularly scheduled meetings of classes to ensure attendance, accountability and the needs of our population are met. And in order to address the equity-related issues and the availability of equipment, what we plan to do is we just distribute some of our Chromebooks to our students. And we have on order about 2,500 Chromebooks. We are waiting for them to come in. They are slated right now with no changes for September. But if not, as soon as they come in, we will distribute those along with the other 1,900 that we already have. Also, we have been exploring internet connectivity throughout the community and trying to find ways that would be, make it possible for our community that does not have internet to have some. We want to review the path forward for the second marking term on October the 8th. We already have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled and we could easily make a executive session and an open session to review where we are. That would give our families more than a month to know where we're going for second marking term. And then we would use our same methods that we've already been using to determine where we are at that time. So, and then if we are still virtual after second marking term, it is my recommendation that in our January 2020 year meeting, we would evaluate the structure for third and fourth marking periods so that we are giving our parents plenty of time to determine where they, what they need to do for their children. Rationale, the reason why we feel it's virtual. The growing number of cases that are increasing and in this area, the age is 15 to 29 years old, which encompasses many of our high school students who then have students who are younger that are in our school district as well. Due to the staff survey responses, we do have a legitimate concern about the securing sufficient staff with seeing so many of them that are in the high-risk category. And we know it will not be easy to find substitutes or quality teachers to supplement what we already have. As mentioned before, we have three schools without air conditioning. Also, our school buses are usually slated to have 72 children on the bus, but with social distancing, we would have to cut that down to about a third. Therefore, in order to accommodate bringing our students to school, it would require an adjustment in a staggered schedule to get everyone in. And that would be really difficult for classes in having a schedule. And then the family engagement survey and numerous emails reflect community concerns about returning to school. I have brought those with me and many of them have asked for virtual as well. And then the difficulty in running a dual-hybrid virtual program and an in-person program simultaneously, I feel that our staff would be dithered the glory by doing the virtual and being able to have everyone working in the same man. So the communication plan, where do we go from here? Once the board has made its determination, then we need to submit our plan to the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And so we'd like to do that next week, which would give us a chance to make any recommendations that are, have been added. We need to provide information and updates to our district website and an all-call to our families no later than Tuesday, August the 11th. Post the health and safety plan on the website. It's already posted, but of course, if we need to make changes, we would re-post. We need to meet weekly through Zoom with our district administrators to ensure that progress is made. We need to communicate updates during the parent-student advisory committee meeting, which is slated for August. We need to communicate updates during the committee of the home meeting in August to say where we are. We are two weeks from school, starting September 8th. We would also communicate during board meetings and to provide updates as we have monthly meetings so that the community, as well as the board, are aware where we are. And then we need to plan our professional learning for our staff, which is slated for August 31st through September 3rd. And a lot of that would be PD to help the teachers and our staff be prepared with technology and curriculum as we try to move forward. Next steps, continue planning the professional development. We need to plan a technology distribution for the students, planning a mail distribution for the students. We will be scheduling weekly faculty meetings so that the principals are able to provide more support to the teachers as they are trying to implement this virtual program. We need to schedule, as we said, weekly administration meetings and continue to provide our updates to the board of directors and our stakeholders. And this is the list of all of the people who have been working on the plan. And as I said, there are people from every work group that we have in the district. And we are grateful to them and we appreciate them taking the time to come out and work on the plan. Even after they have left, some of them have emailed other ideas and suggestions to the plan and just been willing to work wholeheartedly to help us, try to help our students be successful. Earlier in the week, as I said, I had received a few emails and we wanted to respond quickly to those. One was, if this school district opens up virtually, will students be held accountable for their work in the same way that they would during an early semester? So what we will find is, we began earlier in the week. We worked five hours today and we are scheduled for several hours on Monday. As a district, our goal is to put out a Southeast Delco School District Parental Guide that will have all the information, way more than any FAQ would have, so that every parent and student knows the expectations and how we're going to do everything that is planned. As you see, this one is bigger. This is our educational instructional guide and this will be for all of our staff members. And each position that is held in the district is spelled out in here on the expectations and what needs to be done and the support that we will provide them. A question was asked, will the teachers have access to their classroom resources? And the answer was, of course, they will be able to make an appointment to go into the school to get everything that they need. If the school district opens up virtually, will each student have access to a laptop? We've already talked about, we will roll out with the process that we had last year. And then as more laptops come in, we will move down our waiting list to ensure that we can give laptops to everyone. We're also giving our kindergartners an iPad instead of a laptop, which is more appropriate for their apps and their age of learning. And then that would help us have more laptops or Chromebooks for our other students. And the question about how will attendance be handled is one of the questions we began working on today. But of course, before anything can be solidified, we have to have a vote. So we've been working and brainstorming, but the initial final categories will happen once we have a vote of a positive. All of these emails here are mainly, can school be virtual? Can school be virtual? And I cannot say if I did not receive others because I have been in meetings all the rest of the afternoon. So if there are others that were not answered, I will reach out to them. But these are the ones I was able to print out. Here's one that asked, will we be using Ingenuity and Odysseyware? And how much did it cost? The cost was free to the district because the state purchased it for the state of emergency. However, we have not reached a decision quite yet which platform we will be using. We will try to tie that up on Monday, once we know what the vote is here. Also asked that there was a power button that was broken on a laptop and the key didn't work. And they should just contact our technology department so that they could receive a different laptop. And they asked, what feedback did the teachers get from parents about the platforms? As I said, there wasn't a lot of negative feedback from the parents. The parents were, 83% of them, fine with the virtual learning. Some of the teachers did express not being as comfortable using Edgenuity and Odysseyware. And that covers the questions that were on here. And this is a copy of the latest CDC guideline that we are using to ensure not only that our plan that we are putting on the website, but everything that we are setting up for both of our guides, we're ensuring that it is followed by this. Are there any other questions from me? Thank you.
I have a question as well.
Okay.
I do too.
Who's going first?
You are.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My question is, when we refer to remote learning, are we specifically saying virtual classrooms? Or dissimilar to what was provided in the past? That's my question.
Our endeavor is to have a mix. Is to have some virtual, some asynchronous, which means whatever lessons being taught live, the students will have the opportunity to go. Those who may have been at daycare or somewhere else can go onto line and get that. Also, we're looking at having some type of program. For lack of a better one to think of right now, possibly Study Island, where we do some supplemental. So we're looking at the same way in a classroom. We differentiate our instruction and have different modalities of learning, which then meets the needs of all of our students. That is what we're looking to do.
Okay, I just want to just clarify. What I hear you saying is there will be a combination of different opportunities for students to learn, which will include a virtual classroom where students are showing up, for instance, on a Tuesday morning at 10:00 a.m. with their entire class?
Yes, or at least those that are available.
I'm sorry, Dr. Winder, I didn't hear the last thing you said.
I said, yes, with at least those that are available. We have to take into consideration that the students that are not old enough to be home by themselves, if their parents are working, they may be at a daycare who's not going to hook them up to Zoom or Google Meet. Therefore, we need the asynchronous part of a recording. We also will have packets because there are going to be some parents who, based on their child's ability or the convenience, are going to want a packet and not be involved with the internet. So we're going to have all those options. Understood, thank you.
Okay, so I have to apologize a little bit because we didn't hear at the beginning of the slides, presentation for the first, I don't know, minute or two, there was no volume. So what I'd like to, I had a parent ask me about IEPs. And how do we approach, how is that going to be handled with kids with IEPs?
So we have spelled out in our handbook for our teachers, as well as for the guide, we will follow the IEP. Many IEPs will call for small group or individual learning through Google Meet, as well as Zoom. There's the ability to put students in breakout rooms in small groups. If there are students who are on the, not in the internet part, then we are able to call and make personal connections through the phone. One of the things we've added as a piece of our plan is for weekly communication logs to occur per building through Google Docs, as well as individual ones to be handed in. Also, we will conduct our IEP meeting, either virtually or through teleconference, whichever preference the parent would have.
Okay, how about like with IEPs that have, kids that have like individual meetings, like with speech or, or learning, how are we going to handle that? Just all through Zoom or through virtual?
Yes, that's teletherapy. And even for companies out in the regular business world, that is the same model they're using. They're using teletherapy for, or speech, behavior, OT, PT and counseling.
Okay.
Good evening, I have, I'm sorry, Ed, are you finished?
I'm done, thank you.
I apologize. Good evening, this is Raquel. My first question is on grading. How would the students be graded if they're online?
So one of the things that we worked on extensively today is we went through to look at what, as a district, we have been comprising our grade book of. And we've had some discussions about that. We also had discussions about methods of getting work back from students. We have Classroom Dojo, where you're able to upload work. You're able to mail work in. You're able to use your cellphone and email it back to the teacher. And we also talked about having a Dropbox where they were dropping off at the schools, which was previously used as well. That is one of the things we are fine-tuning. The principals were charged today to email their teachers to find out from them other ideas that they might have to help with getting the work graded in a timely fashion. So they are bringing that back when we come together on Monday.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, will our students receive specials? Or is it just a poor curriculum?
We have assignments for every person that is employed by us. And some of that will include our specialists providing as much as be possible some type of activity to the students. But it will not be probably every day, but on a schedule as they get specials anyway. Um, but it will not be probably every day, but on a schedule as they get specials anyway.
Okay, and my um last question has to do with, uh, I think I heard you say that Monday you're you're not gonna use Ingenuity, you're looking at something different. Um, if we do look at something different, we only have a couple of weeks until the teachers come back. Will they uh get training? Um, you know, a few days as they come back um for uh the PD, will they get training on the new uh software that you um wanna use?
So first, Ingenuity is not completely out. We know that some people said they didn't prefer that. But we are looking at all of the different ones to see what is going to be best. And the four days, that's why we asked for a calendar update um and to be revised so that we can actually get an extra day. So we have four days to work with them on the technology. But we also set up the weekly faculty meetings for o- other opportu- opportunities to follow up and help teachers where they might be struggling and to collaborate. So we recognize that the more professional development that we provide our staff, the better instruction our students are going to receive.
And I just have one more question for clarity. Um, I saw a schedule online. Um, it might have been from Upper Darby or another one, and it had the days that were, I'm not sure how many other people saw it, it had the days that were blocked out and timed. Um, are the teachers or the students gonna uh be provided? Is that, is it a schedule like that? Or um is it gonna be a schedule like a day here or a day there that the teachers will be on up?
So when we met today, we discussed the importance of the schedule and that we're looking to um block out times to ensure, especially since unlike some other districts, they may have one-to-one laptops. So two children could be in different rooms doing that Zoom at the same time. Right now, we're not equipped to do that. So we're gonna block out grade level times. We have a, I have a pseudo schedule here with me now that um was provided today. But we're gonna continue to work on that piece to make sure that we are giving students um time, but not putting a family that has three children and one laptop in a situation where everybody's moving now. So everything that we have to do will have to be district-wide. It can't be everybody doing whatever they want to do because we don't have the resources for that at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Um, Ms. uh, Dr. Winder, I had another uh question came up. Um, actually, um, another two questions. The um, I'm wondering if you're considering providing SEL throughout the week for students. Um, I had the privilege to spend six weeks with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I'm sorry, sixth and ninth graders this summer. And we found we had to bring in counselors and therapists um for students to, you know, have extra services because they were suffering from depression, anxiety, et cetera. Is there a plan in place for our students who are learning virtually that if they have some concerns or needs um that one, SEL, social and emotional learning will be provided? Or two, um, we have therapists kinda on speed dial to come into the Zoom classrooms to support the students? Um, that's that's the the first question. And then secondly, um, in terms of instructional time, the um, if there's a hundred percent, let's say a hundred percent instructional time, what percentage of that would you say students will be with their teachers or with their instructors um during the day? That's my second question.
Okay.
Thanks.
So the first question um entails looking at our um educational instructional pandemic guide. What we have done is planned um for our counselors, our behavior interventionists, um, our social worker, all of those type of positions to reach out to the families and to um spend time with the children. We've also asked that as our educators are planning their lessons. So one of the things we talked about today was having a writing prompt. A writing prompt that says, you know, talk about the things that were positive while you were home for the pandemic and what are some things that had a negative effect on you? And to actually have some small group and social group time as a part of their classroom activities, but it would also lend him to be able to reach out to the counselors as well as the um psychologists and the different other um staff members that work with the mental health to say, hey, can you do a call to uh Brenda's house? And you know, she's really struggling and having a difficult time with that. So we've already acknowledged that we know that that is the case. It's the other reason why we're having our weekly faculty meetings because we recognize not only the students, but our faculty need some support and are struggling and for depending on their situation at home, they need our support. And so we also want to do that. Or they may run into a situation that they need us to collaborate with how to deal with it. So we are very cognizant of that. We also have in the back of our parent guide, we will have all types of supports that are available throughout the state and in this community to help with a variety of resources, not just mental health, but other things that they may encounter um like social assistance and things like that. So that was the first question. And the second question was instructional time. Um, once again, because we do not have everybody with a laptop, we will not be trying to provide a seven-point-five-hour virtual day and then give homework assignments. We have to be cognizant that with our parents, if they are at home working and have their children and everybody's trying to use the laptop and everybody's got the assignment. So today we started working with, looking at each grade band, like K to two, three to five, six to eight, and nine through twelve, and make some determinations on what would be appropriate times and amounts of work to give. Um, our job is to want to grow our students, but not overwhelm the families to the point that this is even more of a burden than it is a help. So our job is to stand in the gap and meet the parents halfway.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, guys, Dr. Winder for that uh presentation, very informative. Uh, I do have to admit that this is the first time we've had one that was so uh informed to the board, and I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, are there any public comments regarding the agenda items? Are they the ones that Dr. Winder used already? Okay, Dr. Winder spoke on those. Now we're going to do the new business, the voting to approve the Southeast Delco School District Health and Safety reopening plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have the um, are there any public comments that are non-agenda? Okay. Announcements for the future meetings. Committee of the whole meeting is Thursday, August twenty, twenty twenty at six PM. Board Business Meeting is Thursday, August the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at seven PM. And we will have a short executive session immediately following this meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.